Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Education to order. Mr. Suba is tied up this evening in the state legislatures, so I'm chairing the meeting tonight, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight is a workshop meeting. The topic is Thought Exchange from Ms. Chady and Mr. Weathers.
Thank you very much. My name is Margaret Chady. I'm the Public Information Officer for Wyndham Public Schools. First of all, I'd like to share that Dr. Garcia regrets that she cannot be here this evening. As you're aware, she's out on a personal matter. But she, I think, is especially sad not to be here to share with you something that she learned about a few weeks ago at a superintendent's conference that she attended, a national conference. And she came back from the conference, which focused on innovation within school districts and technology and these kinds of issues, and was very enthused about a group that she was exposed to there called Thought Exchange. And she came back and shared it with the cabinet and also department heads because she really felt that this was something that other superintendents spoke highly of and that was really an innovative way to take the pulse of what people are thinking and stakeholders are thinking about a number of issues and programs that we might institute within the district. It provides a great platform for asking questions, for hearing from stakeholders, evaluating their input, and in this day and age where people may be reluctant to answer a survey that they may not understand what the impact of that survey is until months out, if they even remember they took it, but with the Thought Exchange process, people actually get right away some feedback on what other people are saying about the same issues. So it's really a very compelling and engaging way to work with our stakeholders. So what we're going to do is turn it over at this time. I feel a little bit like the Wizard of Oz, like the man behind the curtain. The man on the screen is the great and powerful Oz, but tonight it's a great and powerful Thought Exchange partner who is, whose name is Matt Brizet. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Matt to show you a demonstration of this, of his products.
Thanks, Margaret. Can, are you in here, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'm not on a power phone, but hopefully I can provide some insight for you as to what Thought Exchange does and how it might be helpful for you. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna share my experience here. I'll give you an overview of what Thought Exchange does and how we fit into the environment of interacting with the community. And I want to put a quick video for you that was actually unsolicited on our behalf. A district superintendent from California sent this in to us, and I thought I'd share with you just so you can understand, I think, the value that a district leader gets from Thought Exchange. And then I'll get into the details and types of reports and things that we can provide for you. All the while, feel free to ask questions as we go, and then we'll move from there. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we're right, it should go purple when you're on it.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Purple. We know that when the district is reaching out to the community for one reason or another, whether there's large change to be had or you're really interested in getting a sense of, you know, kind of a climate check, how are things going, there are a lot of different ways you can do it. And we know that from a participant, from a parent's standpoint, what they really love is a one-to-one conversation, either with a board member or the superintendent or another district leader, which is great, and those one-to-one conversations are extremely valuable. The challenge that, of course, we know of that is that the scalability of that is really challenging, and capturing all of the information in those conversations in an effective way that you can manipulate and align around particular goals or objectives that you may have can become quite challenging. So then you might, you know, turn to focus groups and listening tools, and again, those are good, but the scalability becomes a challenge and the data pieces are also, can also be challenging. But the flip side of face-to-face interaction, of course, is surveying folks or online surveys, and we know that that can get at some decent information. The challenge from a participant's perspective that we continue to hear is that they feel surveyed. They don't feel like they actually, like Margaret was saying, things just kind of get lost, and they're not necessarily part of the dialogue that goes on, that which interaction, when you have a one-to-one conversation, goes away. Of course, there's other ways to reach out, there's social media and, you know, town hall meetings, which can be helpful, but again, what we hear all time and time again from our customers is what they see in that are prevailing thoughts by the most powerful people or the loudest voices, not necessarily what the silent majority is, might be saying. So our challenge as a company that we've taken on is to try to bridge all of this, bring the best pieces of all these three areas together, and create something in Thought Exchange that allows for an effective way to reach the best of all those pieces. In doing so, we've created a tool that's not necessarily something that is only applied to strategic planning or annual improvement. It's a tool that it can be used effectively to inform all sorts of changes and initiatives that are going on within the district, whether that's, you know, the construction of a new academy or changing boundary realignments, et cetera, all of which can be easily managed within this in a respectful way. How do we do that? We do it through three, we do basic steps. We ask people to answer through technology, typically emails, some really simple and open-ended questions. We'll send them a link and they come in through our platform, and they get to answer the questions in their own time and space. After they've had a chance to answer the questions, we ask them to, we send their responses back, other people's, everybody's thoughts, and like Margaret was saying, maybe they now go to a view, a sampling of other people's thoughts from the community and get to place their priority or their level of weight on the thoughts by assigning stars to those thoughts that matter most to them. And then the third step, of course, is discover, discovers where we unwrap the information at the leadership level, and then we build a website to share that information back out to the community in a way that fits with the district. And we do all of that work with you, with the district. There's all sorts of services that are, that are layered in, in behind these three steps. So I'm gonna pause here. If there's any questions, please let me know while I navigate over to this video that I want to show you. Here is, this is Dr. David Van Astal. He's the superintendent of Arcadia Unified School District in California. Just so you know, he's gonna talk about something called LCAP. It's a Local Accountability, Local Control and Accountability Plan. The state uses it to allocate funding. You can think of LCAP in a lot of ways that you would think about strategic planning. A lot of districts use their LCAP framework as their working strategic plan.
I was attending a conference, and I was at a session, and there was a gentleman there doing a little activity from his company, it was a new company at the time called Thought Exchange, and the best way I can describe it is a su-
Just to be sure, are you able to hear his voice?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Started doing it, and I said, "This is the same process I've been doing for years." Most of our viewing audience will probably say, "Yeah, I've done that." And the idea is you just brainstorm with a group of people. You just take butcher paper, you put it up on the wall, and you tell people, "Go up to the wall, look at all the statements that have been made, and you get to vote your dots wherever you want." What this company did was they just took that and they made it digital. They just said, "You know, we're in a new era, people are too busy to get to a meeting," which is what we found. So it's a positive way of helping people understand where their thoughts are compared to the rest of the district. So we entered into a contract with this company and did our first one, and we were just, we went literally from 20 people giving comments to thousands of comments. And that was the goal, and the more voices we have, the better we are, so.
So where do we get all these comments and these thoughts? See the stars, what's important to people? Who on the district side is looking at the data?
Basically everyone. It just depends. What's great about it is, because it's a general process, we are using it with, down the road when we don't even know right now that a subject's gonna come up. So an example is the high school, just went through their WASC accreditation process. So they said, "Well, we just had this Thought Exchange, so let's start there and see, what did the data say about the high school?" So, you know, that saved them months of work. So, but when we did it, we weren't even thinking about the WASC self-study for the high school. So it continues to be used like that. We'll get in a meeting and start talking about, maybe a program comes up. This is where we can go to our process and say, "Did that come up?" You know, we can do a search on a keyword or a tag and say, "How many times has someone mentioned, 'This is a program I think Arcadia should look at.'" So it's, you know, the data that comes back is general in the sense of we know what are the target areas that we need to look at, but then once you see that target area on a traditional survey, you would just say, "Okay, safety's an issue," or, you know, "Curriculum," or whatever. But now you click on that, and you literally have access to every comment that was made. So that's the story behind it, right? And just like we used that data to make improvements on the district level, the principals are using that data to really detail in and look at their site and what are the issues that people are bringing up. So the data behind this is so detailed that when we're finished with it, we have specific plans, action plans, to put in our LCAP that we know we're gonna improve the district and we're being responsive to our community. So it's been a great partnership with them.
Okay. Can you hear that okay?
Yes.
Great. I always want to check because I know the audio can be challenging sometimes in Florida. Okay, so what do these, what do these steps look like in the Thought Exchange process? The first step in share, I mentioned by email, so what we do is we send an email out on your behalf, and in fact, we send them out at each school level. So we send them to the school population, they're cosigning both by the principal and the superintendent most often, unless there's someone else in the district who is more the face of that particular initiative, and then they'll often be the ones signed on the email. This email can go out in Spanish and in English, and the invitation to participate can exist in Spanish and English so that we can get as many participants in both language groups as possible. And then once they click on that button, they're straight into the process. There's no username or password or account to be set up or anything like that. If there's other people that you want to involve in the process, or if you don't have a complete email list of parents and everyone else that you'd like to include, this link over here, we call a self-register link, and that can be sent out through text message, social media, posted on bulletin boards, what have you, to invite folks into the process where they register with their email address and then come into the pub, they'll be invited in. The important element of this is also, whether it's functional on a desktop or laptop, but it's also functional on an iPad or any sort of tablet or connected phone, so any smartphone as well. Once people come in, we can ask some demographic questions, up to five demographic questions, provide some background as to why they're being asked to do what we're asking them to do, and then ensure that all they're asked to do is respond to some very basic questions, whether they're open-ended in general to address strategic planning and annual improvements, or maybe they're a little bit more fenced to address a language program. Regardless, what we're looking for are people's interests. We're looking for their concerns, their thoughts, or their appreciations around that particular area that you're driving. And then people can respond as many times as they like. We ask them to title their thought and then provide some detail with, to their, to what's important to them. Generally, we find what's most effective are approximately three or four questions, and from that, we're able to, you'll see all the information that we're able to pull That share step is open for approximately seven to 10 days, and it depends on how satisfied we all are with the level of responsive from the community, and sometimes we need to leave it open a little bit longer. But then it's closed off, and then after it's closed, we have a team of people, largely formerly educators, who go in and they review every single thought that's been put in in conjunction with a set of criteria that was established so that we can make sure that the thoughts are appropriate to be passed on into STAR. So of course, if a thought is really hurtful, and we define that with the leadership team, if it's nonsensical or if there's a name involved, but depending on how the district feels about individuals being identified, those thoughts can be pulled out, brought to the district's attention, and then the leadership has the opportunity to say, "No, let's include that," or "Thank you, we want to keep that out." That takes three to four days, max. And then we need to start, and so we invite everybody back in. Doesn't matter if you participated in step one, everyone has an opportunity to participate in step two. And this is where people can come in, and they're invited to now, tell us what resonates most with them. Tell us what's important to you in the conversation and the ideas of your community members. And so when people come in, they have an opportunity to, one, see, you'll notice that my sample thought that was on the screen, the algorithms work in the background to make sure that the individual who shared their thoughts was seeing one of their thoughts in the conversation. So that piece about, in the two-way conversation about feeling valued and that their thoughts are being heard, begins to take shape here. The other piece that's really important is that they begin to have an opportunity to learn from other people in a way that doesn't, that takes away from the volume of the thoughts being shared out. So it's not a loud, forceful voice at the microphone or in the hallway. All thoughts are presented equally here. And then because, you know, presented equally, now I, as a participant, am asked to place stars in the thoughts that resonate most with me. And I do that by assigning stars to the thoughts. For each question, I receive, I receive three pages of thoughts. Of course, if, you know, if we were to ask people to go through hundreds of thoughts, then it's gonna get tiresome and people, it doesn't really serve the purpose. The idea here is to surface themes and areas of focus that people are most interested in. So we make sure we thought same an equal number of times, and then we show an assortment of thoughts. Is there any questions around STAR? Because this is what really makes Thought Exchange different. We're good? Okay. So once STAR wraps up, that takes like another seven to 10 days or so. Very quickly after that, we begin to roll out into the discovery phase, which is where, you know, from a leadership perspective, there's a lot of interest in finding out, you know, what was said, how has that impacted us, et cetera, et cetera. So we begin to build what we call a discovered dashboard, and that's where, there's a series of reports that are kept. I'm gonna share some of these with you. This example I'm gonna show you is from Winmar, Iowa. Dr. Quentin Shepherd was a new superintendent. He came in and during his hundred-day listening tour, he learned about us recently before that brought us in. He used us, one, to confirm what he was hearing on, through his listening tour, was what the broader community was saying, it's a bit larger district. And secondly, he wanted to make sure that everybody had an equal opportunity to be involved in the creation of their new strategic plan. And so here's how they did that. They asked some really simple questions. They asked, "What are some things you appreciate about our schools?" The second question is, "What are some areas that you think we can improve upon or grow?" Because they had the strategic planning piece that we had from the board, they asked a question that says, you know, "What are some things you think the board should focus on in our new strategic plan?" And then the last one was a catch-all, simply, "How are we doing? Is there anything else we'd like to say?" This report that you're looking at is what we call a top thoughts report. And so I mentioned that this happens at each and every campus. There's a top thoughts report that emerges at the campus level, and then we take those top thoughts, we merge them together, and we create a district report. So essentially, you have reporting and data for a school, and then also at the district level, and those are tied together. And then you can begin to drill into this. So, you know, what is it that people are saying about our staff that they, what makes them so special? Why is this the biggest theme that emerged in the appreciations? We can begin to understand who's saying what. Is it a parent, grandparents? We can also put tags on here to say what school that, that thought came from. The way this is sorted right now is sorted by the number of people who place stars on thoughts. You can also sort it in a number of different ways. In this case, the ranking won't change too much, but this is now the number, total number of stars that a thought provided. These are all verbatim thoughts. If this thought was submitted in Spanish, I think there would be a translate button here, and then I would be able to go and see it in its English form or words per se. The one other piece that I didn't mention in STAR, my apologies, is Spanish and English thoughts get mixed together there, and we use translation software for people to be able to see the translation, but also bounce back and forth between Spanish and English. And that way, it brings those communities together, and allows for people that are nervous to, who are, you know, Spanish, who are Spanish's first language, it allows that barrier of maybe a little bit of nervousness to share their thoughts in English to go away. And we see that in our work in California and Texas and elsewhere across the country. Passion is the number of stars divided by people, and again, that'll change. This is a great way to get a good understanding of what special interest thoughts, or what are areas that some folks are organizing around that are more of a special interest sort of area. The other, so that's great, and that can be really helpful when we're, you know, starting to get deep into the analysis. What we found, though, is that people are even at a higher level view into things, and so we built what we call an interactive bar chart. So this is something that allows folks to focus in on one particular area, like see, get a sense of how things are ranking, and then eventually drill into the thoughts behind how that, that particular item got to where it is in the discourse. So right now, we've seen our bar charts that represent the total number of stars in each themed area here. These are themes that are merged from the data, total number of stars that fall into each theme. We can also compare questions. So in this case, we're comparing the appreciative, or the appreciative thoughts, or we call them in the purple areas, and then the areas where there's room for growth from, in the community's eyes, are in orange. So if you look at appreciations, again, here's that teacher and staff theme. You'll notice that there's next to no conversation around leadership administration or anything else. There's all this discussion around appreciative thoughts for how well their staff are treating their kids. And again, to the school level, number of stars, who, what type of person in the community submitted that thought. And you can roll down from higher, to lower level of support for each of these thoughts. Of course, that's great, you know, it's, this is really valuable stuff to be able to share and say, "Really, though, team, we're doing a great job here. I know things are tough right now, but look at the impact you're having." If we look at areas where there's more concern around learning environment, well, class size is a common one to hear about, we can even, so we can drill into class size and see that, you know, in this particular district, they're growing, they're bulging at the scene, you know, all the walls are being pushed out because there's so many kids in each class. And they were able to use this information to begin to build a case to go to a bond referendum for a new school. Of course, my understanding is that's not necessarily the case here, but it's a way that, so that you could, I want to show you this so you can see how the commentary here can begin to be used in communication back out to the district community. Again, these are verbatim thoughts. Is there any questions on this so far? Okay. Two other graphics here that I'd like to show you. One is what we call a heat map, and so this is something where we're able to do, to align different things, compare different areas. The darker the color in the heat map, the higher the level of importance within the community. So, you know, an area in the strategic plan question that got a lot of emphasis, there's two areas. One was around facilities infrastructure, the other one was around technology. And then you can begin to understand what it is in that technology piece that's driving, driving the conversation. Again, just differently looked at things, but I wanted to draw your attention to here are two things, though. One is a lot of satisfaction. On the, on the way out of the participation piece, you can ask how satisfied are folks with their experience in the district right now? And now you can begin to really get a sense of what is it that people who are dissatisfied with the district? Are they dissatisfied with everything, or what key pieces are they dissatisfied with? Is it, you know, funding, budget, et cetera, et cetera? And I don't need to drill into the thoughts to show you that. The other piece here, there's demographics, and then in this case, they can look at it, they're looking at it from a campus-by-campus level. The reason why this is important is to get a sense of if that issue is really an issue across the entire district, or if there's some anomalies. And in this case, class size right there on the bottom, if you notice, there's a lot of red, so a lot of concern with the class size, except for this one school. And when we asked the superintendent, Dr. Quentin Shepherd, why that one school has less, he's like, "That's really interesting, you know, that's, that's our most affluent school in the district, and it's the school where the class size really isn't an issue." So it allows to, allows planning for how to deal with that class size conversation and the budget, or the referendum piece. In that particular population will be a little bit different than the way it is with folks in the, you know, in the other campuses. Lastly, we're able to, how do people's sentiments shift from share through STAR? So when they're initially, in their own personal world, you know, they shared their thoughts, okay, that's where they started, but once they got an opportunity to consider other people's perspectives, did their, did their perception actually change? What pieces fell off in conversation and what pieces increased? And so, you know, in this question around appreciation, there was a significant increase in conversation, in involvement around this appreciative comments for staff and teachers, and a whole lot less commentary about facilities and infrastructure. If you flip over to, you know, the concerns, class size grows, of course, and in fact, the facilities, the infrastructure piece, that, the concern with facilities and infrastructure is accommodating growth in class size. So all that to say that what Thought Exchange helps you do is really dig out the why behind the what, as far as issues that are coming up and changes that are being made, and then therefore allows you to take that language and use it in your communication and your planning as you move forward. Lastly, we'll build a website that's a public-facing website, and you can share this out to the community, the link from your, your district website or the school's websites and/or however you want to do it. And we'll start from the top, so thank you from the superintendent here, a quick word, and then, you know, here's how many people participated in the process. Here is what our community appreciates. They had just about 25% participation in their district. And then we do some curation, so these are the overarching themes in appreciation. We'll pull out a thought that is representative of that theme, we'll clean it up, make sure that the grammar and spelling and punctuation, et cetera, is all good, and then we'll put this together for you, areas of improvement, et cetera. This district also, while the parents and staff were having their conversation in Thought Exchange, the students were having their own, and so you can pull that information out as well, as far as, you know, how is, we can ask very similar questions and get a sense of, you know, are the parents and adults off-base to what the kids are saying, or how do those conversations connect? And then we'll even provide some data here on what's happening at each individual school. So I can go into Wilkins Elementary, where my stu-, my- So I can go into Wilkins Elementary where my son and daughter might go and get a good sense of what people are saying in my immediate school, and I can get, I can measure my thoughts now against what the discourse is being had here. Does that make sense to everyone?
What's the time process for this, start to finish for you?
Mr. French, could you use the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
He can hear you, if you don't use the mics.
Hello, what's the, what's the time process from start to finish with the website?
Yeah, so what, once all the planning is done, which can take anywhere from two, it's usually a couple meetings over a week or two on the backend, and then when we hit go, the way it works is people will take seven to 10 days to share their thoughts, which will have a quick intermission to moderate the thoughts, and then another seven to 10 days for people to put stars on thoughts, show their priority on things. So call that three weeks, and then very quickly after that, within a week to two weeks, we'll have the beginnings of the discovered data available. And we'll share that, we'll set up another meeting where the facilitator on the Thought Exchange side works with the key people associated with the product, project here, and then, so, you know, and then we unravel that information, show them how to use the data tools, and then we'll check back in in another week or 10 days or so and begin to, you know, Margaret might say, look, this is helpful, but can we look at it through this lens with this set of criteria, please? And we'll say, absolutely, we'll turn that around within a few days and have it back. And then we can also work to create, you know, executive summaries for you folks at the board. We can share information any which way that makes sense to you per project. So it's a real quick transition in time, and it also allows the, we take on all the heavy lifting, so it doesn't, it's not an extra burden on the district staff.
I'm sorry, I have to call my chair, Chris. How, how often do districts use this? Is this generally a one-time use or is it something that they repeatedly contract for? And what does it cost?
Sorry, I missed the last four words.
What does it cost? Those are the important words for our district.
Thoughts, that's what I was going to say to make sure. Yeah, I'll speak to the first part and if Neil's in the room, I think he needs to speak to the other piece there. Neil, do you want to speak?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to speak to both. So we're specifically right now, so we're at the stage where we saw this presentation, it was presented in front of the cabinet, and we saw everything you just saw. And we, as a group, started discussing what could we use, what would be the benefits of it for when the public schools? So you saw some broad district applications, we were looking at it from a specific perspective. For example, recently, there was a forum from Companeros through language. Something like that would be specific to us. Or there was recently a forum on personalized learning for grade six, another very specific application. And then two others, and we are in discussion, that could benefit us, is looking at general transitions, like getting into, getting the thoughts of parents when you have fifth graders moving into sixth graders or for that matter, eighth and, you know, any transition, but how can we support ahead of time? So when we're preparing orientations or things like that, we're ahead of the curve, so to speak. Getting specific, timely, what's current in the minds of parents. And the fourth application was something, when we're looking to expand opportunities for, you know, expanded career, college opportunities for our students that are in high school, when we look towards that sort of initiative, using these more for like specific applications like that, and those are like the four examples we talked about. In terms of cost, because we haven't, so obviously, Dr. Garcia's not here, we haven't officially decided the specifics of which of those we're going to use yet, but we wanted you to be in the loop where we were and see this. So we don't have a specific cost yet because the, because we haven't decided the use yet. We know that any cost that we do would be under $20,000, like, but I don't even think it will be that, but we can definitely provide that information when we have it, we just haven't gotten to that point yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
One quick note is the districts will use it, we have, as a company, been in this area for going on six and a half years now. What we have gotten a good feel for is what's too much interaction with the community so that there isn't fatigue. And so we try to balance with the needs of the administration and understanding how, how can we get to a higher level in the questions and design so that we don't need to do too many throughout the year.
Dr. Gomez?
Yes, we're talking about costs. Is this a one-time payment or is this annually, you pay a license for use every year? Or is this just a one-time, you buy it?
Yeah, so when we put a licensing, a agreement together, we do it on an annual cost, and then everything that we discuss as planning in advance of that is built into that cost. So it's not like...
It's an annual license.
If Neil wanted additional analysis or Margaret said, please look at this from a linear way, that's included in the cost that was previously negotiated and it's not a, there's no hidden fees.
So I'm talking about yearly, so annual payment. So if you say $20,000, is that per year, every time you renew your license to use it a year? Or is it just a one-time? And then how does the payment system work?
It is annual, but just to be clear, I was just saying, we don't know the exact cost. I was saying less than $20,000. I wasn't saying that it is $20,000 or I don't have a number. I just want to be clear on that. But yes, it is annual, correct.
Okay.
That's the answer, yes.
And how often you use it or for what?
That would be worked out in the agreement before you...
So your agreement limits the uses you can put it to?
Correct.
The agreement, so generally, the agreement covers what the district is looking to do. And so we have a, there's access to the end of the software, and then we build a plan to go to address the initiatives the district's looking to accomplish over that period of time. If other things come up, then that's definitely something we're open to discussing. We're certainly not in this space where we try to nickel and dime folks. We're definitely in the space where we try to build long-term partnerships.
See, my problem here is that what we can do is in itself a process of discovery. For example, you listed a number of projects that involve the public. We have a parent population that, a substantial fraction of which does not have access to the internet, or does not have ready access to the internet, or if they do have access to the internet, they're not comfortable using it. We have a staff population that does have access to the internet and is comfortable using it. We have a student population that has access to the internet and is presumably comfortable using it. So, so we're looking at different constituencies with different capacities to actually make use of this tool. So the kinds of things that we might be able to do depend on the kinds of questions we want to ask, but also the capacity of the potential constituency to actually deal with the technology. And that's something we have to figure out.
One of the questions that I wanted to pose to Matt while we had him is, do you, have you dealt with districts that, that not all parents have access to technology and how do you account for that? What's been your experience with that?
Right, so I'm talking to you from Tula Vista, California, right now, which is a, you know, a high-freight reduced lunch district, north of 80%, and so there's a high Latino population and a high low-income population. We're the customer of ours, Tula Vista, now, for a couple of years. They are over the moon satisfied with the level of participation they're seeing. Because what we know is that people, though they may not have a computer in the home, someone in the home has a smart device. It's an iPhone, it's a Galaxy 3, it's who knows what it is, but they have access because they're on Twitter and Facebook or Snapchat. And they'll use that device to connect. And so because the tool allows to access through mobile platforms, there's a great uptake in reaching those challenged, challenging people to reach. But we know they're not perfect, and we know that technology doesn't solve every single access point out there. We do know that it has increased participation and engagement across the board in all sorts of different districts. There is one district that I, that I put an asterisk on all the time, they're in, they're in Indiana, I want to get that right, they're in Indiana, they're rescue. 55% of the population are typical rural Indiana folk, 45% of the population are Amish, and they don't use technology. And through some creative thinking, we've, we've actually got to a point where the Amish and the non-Amish are able to communicate through Thought Exchange. Amish use a paper system, everybody else uses technology, it takes longer, it's more work, it costs a lot more, a bit more money, but they're able to, there's so much value in it for the district, for these people to be able to share their perspectives. The superintendent who's over there for 25 years has never seen the ability for these communities to integrate and begin to work together and appreciate each other's perspectives the way they do now. And he says it's just the most enriching experience for them. So it's, to answer your question around getting to access into this, we know we're not perfect, we can get creative, the super creative stuff is more labor-intensive and therefore more intensive, unfortunately. But we will work with you, and all we've found is that we've found to be successful, best practices across the nation to bring in as many participants as possible.
Mr. Mottabu?
Yeah, suppose that the original agreement had been signed, but new issues arise that had to be addressed by the system. Do you need a new contract to address those new issues or you can add it and that would be an extra cost?
I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing you.
Okay, supposedly that we've signed the agreement, the original agreement, right? A new issue arises that had to be addressed, do, and that, a new contract do not cover those issues? In order to do those issues, do we have to write a new contract or do we have to pay something extra to use the system?
Well, we can, like I said, that's where, that's where there's this, that's where our investment in the relationship plays into the district's favor. We're most interested in addressing the key areas that are most pertinent to you. So right now, today, you might say that, look, this split, we're really interested in doing, some of it addresses the graduate profile and how do we do an exit survey or an exiting Thought Exchange to that? And then, so we're talking with our seniors in our high school and the parents of those people, maybe we invite everyone else into it because we think their input's important. And then we might have an idea in the spring, in the fall, where we want to get into a good conversation around the dual language academy, but that's what we're thinking now. In September, something might happen, and then you're, like, look, that's important, that dual language stuff, but this thing that happened here, this is like, this is critical discussion in our community right now? No problem, let's deal with this, and then we'll come back to that. We can, we're very open to that. In fact, in Marysville, Washington, I'm not sure if you remember, there was a shooting there a couple of years ago, and they repurposed one of their, we were very flexible with the way we lay out our things. They wound up using, they were the customer of ours already, they wound up using something they were going to use for strategic planning to actually help the community have a constructive conversation that was really challenging to have verbally around what to do with the cafeteria where the shooting took place. And so they used that exchange as a vehicle to have that conversation, and the outcome of that was, we still hear from them about how powerful that was. Thanks.
Are there any other questions at this time? And we, as Neil intimated, we are really just beginning this discussion with our friends at Thought Exchange and how we might use this and brainstorming, and among the staff ourselves as to what would be those initiatives and, you know, to Matt's point, to not have to, to not have fatigue, to not be asking too many things, but to make sure that we are using it in an appropriate way. So we're very early on this journey, but we thought that you would be interested and intrigued by this, you know, taking this approach in a technological fashion.
I do have a question. Matt, in the course of this, as the district tweaks out what we're interested in doing and how we find value in the, in the device, in the tool, would you be interested in partnering with a pilot to see whether or not it actually would resonate?
So it's a conversation we can have, certainly. Well, I leave that to Neil and the team to take that one further.
Thank you.
I had the same thought, but again, not knowing all of the, but, you know, let's try, let's try one and see how we, how we do that, but we can certainly work on, work that through. All right, with no further questions, I guess we will close this part of the presentation. Thank you, Matt, for, for calling in and setting this up for us. Neil and Michael?
Thanks, thank you very much for the time, and I hope you have a wonderful evening and have a nice.
Same to you.
Thank you very much.
Goodbye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment, and Ms. Calucci, did you want to speak?
I thought you were going to have more discussion about this. I'm always apprehensive about spending money on outside institutions, organizations, and consultants. So that's why I came tonight when I saw this on the agenda, and it's unfortunate that the superintendent isn't here. Because in a sense, a school district should be a community, especially for the students, the parents, the teachers. And I do understand that the way they're funded, we have the other people in the town who often are oppositional to the schools, so that's an issue. However, the priority of communication is the parents, the students, the teachers. And if we're having trouble, and we may be, I do think we have to try harder, which is, and that's not buying the product. I'm getting a sense, because the superintendent has, in the last couple of years, done coffees, forums, town hall, and I think they are all valuable in their own way, they're not going to tell you, tell us everything. But I'm getting a sense for her to want to buy this product is she's not hearing what she wants to hear. So she's looking, or perhaps that's too cynical of me, but I have to say, sometimes I do feel that I can say something and many other parents can say it, and it's not what they want to hear. And, and we are not achieving the safe, the safe place that students need to learn, we are not keeping administrators in school buildings. That is a huge concern. I don't care how many stars go up on that. It just looks to me like Amazon. Sometimes I look at the ratings, sometimes I don't. I don't care if thumbs up, thumbs down. In the end, it's do I like the book? So I don't like the corporate kind of nature, the consumerist nature of this product, and I don't like the message I'm getting, that however many meetings I come to, however many times I go to the superintendent, she isn't actually listening to me, who I, who's had three children in this school district, I still have two, there's a building that is about to lose an administrator again. And I want to say three principals and she's out, you know? Really, I feel that we don't have a safe and stable environment in these schools, and there is no product that is grand to ensure that. So that is what I have to say. And as nice as that man is, I also don't like watching television and having these online interfaces. If we need somebody from Canada to get us to talk to each other, we have even more problems than I thought. And also, as far as rude comments go, rude and inappropriate, we hear them all the time, and they come from elected officials in this town, like the Board of Finance. So there is another thing to think about, so that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone want to discuss this any further or will we...
I move, we move.
Well, that's the next option, that either we talk about this a little more or it's your turn, what would you like to do?
Well, I wish we had more of a handout that I could actually...
Well, I wish we had more of a handout that I could actually read some of the stuff, since I couldn't see it on the screen, so...
Yeah, a hard copy of this.
Yeah, if we could get a copy of that, so that we... or email it.
They do have a website, I don't know how much of that presentation is on the website.
So if we can actually see what that presentation is, so we can read it.
Yeah, I would reflect that comment, too, like, I couldn't read it. So, it's nice to say, this is what it says, and these are the stars, but if you don't know what the comments are, or the stars, or the topics, really, yeah, it's hard to follow it completely.
If I may say? Yeah, nobody could read it, I mean, that's the problem. But, what I'm questioning is the usefulness of the tool like this, the cost, because it's a recurring cost over the years, and I just not clear in the use of the system for our district, with our special needs, and I don't know, it's the first time I hear about this project, maybe I miss out on it, but that's all I like to say about it.
Ms. Caluci?
I'm tentative, I'd like to know more about it, I'd like to see how the staff is drilling down on this, in terms of our presumed need. I think engagement in this town is very difficult, getting folks, the parents of our kids to engage, has been a problem. And I think that perspective that most folks have, some sort of smart device, is not inaccurate. I'd like to, once we figure out how we're going, what we need for possibly pilot something around a topic that is important, and see what kind of feedback we get from the parents truly. I mean, if this can be a useful tool, and can get folks to communicate from home in a positive way, any device that will encourage our families to engage with the district, I think is potentially valuable. So I'm interested in seeing where it's going to go, and some sort of test platform.
Mr. Montalvo?
Yeah, I have heard Dr. Garcia many, many times say that she had lunch with staff, with people for the community, that had been very constructive, but I have not heard one comment that she said it was constructive. She only said it was contracted, and that was it. No example of what I have said that we, as a board, can hear what the public or the other teacher are thinking about, or what was the hope meeting about it. I cannot mention one comment, either positive or negative, that I would like to know.
Is this something that we're intending on voting on in the future, or is this something that Dr. Garcia is just going to purchase, and we heard about it...
It sounds like it's going to cost enough money that we'd have to approve the budget.
$20,000 is the threshold?
I think it's actually lower than that. I don't remember what the number is, but it's more than $1,000, but it sounds like the kind of thing where it probably ought to come back to the board, in terms of what we're buying and what we're buying it for. It does occur to me that in about a month or so, or a little more than a month, we're going to get a report back on a study of the high school, which we already know is a complex and difficult problem, that it involves a number of different constituencies in the community who have strong and not necessarily shared opinions about what to do, and who may react quite differently to different aspects of that report, and some sort of collaborative tool might be useful in that circumstance. That might not be the only way. I... Ms. Caluci, I'm not setting aside the notion that you can't trust everything to a product, either. But one way or another, we need to figure out a way to communicate with each other in this community, whether it's a product or some other method. And this is a fairly divided community. I grew up in the segregated South, and the segregated South was not as divided as we knew often is. And the high school problem is a big enough problem, and a community-wide problem, and we need to have some mechanism for figuring out how to deal with it. This may or may not be useful in that circumstance, but it certainly deserves probably some looking into, and getting more information for the board. I don't think we're ready to decide now whether we want to use this, or even something like it, but I don't want to close the door, either. Any other thoughts, comments?
In the words of John Domo, "I move, we move."
Okay, I was going to say, I'm ready to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All in all, he's in order.
Thank you very much.